is here. In fact, we even have a one-year-old cheerleader this evening in the back. If you'll look back there, we've really brought everybody out for this evening. This evening, our school board will be recognizing our girls and boys cross-country teams that went on to state and our middle school girls and high school cheer teams that did superb in the state meet right after homecoming. But first of all, you're probably wondering, what do these students receive besides their name being called in public? Board Chair Janet Newberg, please demonstrate the gilded certificate. Okay, each of you, each of your children will receive one of those. And then the peerless, unobtainable bear pin. Mr. Kimball. Yes. It's... (laughter) In bear, in white bear colors. This evening, I have assistance. And before I call Ms. Pierre, the principal at Sunrise Middle School, I want to acknowledge that cross-country, for those of you who are cross-country families, in fact, can we have the cross-country family stand first? You don't get all that much attention. If you're a member of any of the cross-country team, would you please stand, please? Cross-country families can depend on one thing, that at the section meet at the University of Minnesota, it will either be windy, raining, snowing, or all three, right? And so it's a great spectator sport because you know... Something's important. So, but you know you're going to see other loyal fans. This year, our girls did superbly, finishing first in section. Our boys made an amazing, kind of best-in-the-season run and qualified for state as well. Ms. Pierre, please come forward to introduce our girls.
All right. Congratulations to the following athletes who represented White Bear Lake Area High School and middle schools in the state cross-country meet in early November. The girls did take the home section championship, and my understanding is this is the third year in the row that both boys and girls have qualified for state. Natalie Andrus, 8th grade. Maggie Blanding, 7th grade. Emily Brockberg, 10th grade. Haley Miller, 10th grade. Josie Moore, 10th grade. Keely Nissler, 12th grade, Academic All-State. Olivia Schwintek, 10th grade, Academic All-State. Maddie Verkirke, 9th grade. Alex Weinberger, 9th grade. Coach Shannon Grant. Coach Sue Worrell. And Coach Patty Percival couldn't be with us tonight, but she did receive the Section 4 AA head girls' cross-country coach of the year. Congratulations, girls. At this point, we'd like to invite the girls to come back to the front for a photo op. Come and line up in front of the board members. And then, parents, we invite you forward to take just as many pictures as you'd like. So, Mr. Chapman, do you mind coming and joining us, please? Thank you. All right, look right here, please. We'll go through your shots and make sure we get a great one. Perfect. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
My name's Tim Wald. I'm principal at South Campus, and I am pleased to introduce our boys' cross-country team today. For the last three years, coming out of Section 4, it's been no one but white bear making it, no team but white bear going to the state meet. So our boys and our girls have both qualified for three consecutive years, and our boys now are in six years straight qualifying for the state cross-country meet. So they're becoming legendary. Congratulations to the following athletes who represented White Bear Lake Area High School in the state cross-country meet early November. The boys are runners-up at the section meet. Jace Bartz, Grade 11. Jacob Horvath, Grade 11. Isaac Mariyama, Grade 9. Sam Racine, Grade 10. And our senior, Ben Rowan. 11th grader and Academic All-State runner, Mike Rollinger. Sophomore Trig Solberg. And junior Wyatt Taylor. And finally, junior Ben Vanderbosch. The boys enjoy outstanding coaches. Shyne Gritzmacher, Assistant Coach. And Section 4 Assistant Coach of the Year, Dave Percival. Congratulations, Dave. And our head coach, Dan Kavasich. Congratulations. And, boys, you can come forward for a photo.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind looking in this direction, and you'll see that one in the east side there. Anybody else? Finished? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's relatively rare that we can get photos of the cross-country team runners that are not blurry from their speed, so, great. And we do have some fun photos. We'll make sure the coaches have them. Our girls' cheer teams practice right next to this building, in the community auditorium. And on occasion, I stop over there, and I figure I get the best show in town. The amount of hard work, discipline, teamwork that is part of the cheer team's efforts reveals why they've been so successful. Ms. Pierre.
Congratulations to the following athletes who represented the district in the MCCA State Cheer Off. The team was named the grand champion in the middle school division. First, we have Amanda Alman, 8th grade. Izzy Borer, 7th grade. Natalia Chow, 6th grade. Trisha Dennis, 6th grade. Emily Deo, 7th grade. Ella Flood, 7th grade. Ellie Gregoire, 7th grade. Vanessa Hernandez, 7th grade. Emma Johnston, 8th grade. Mara Judd, 6th grade. Kylie Kendall, 8th grade. Delaney Kissler, 8th grade. Alera Knudsen, 6th grade. Chrysalis Konitzer, 6th grade. Molly Locke, 5th grade. Riann Larive, 8th grade. Anisa Lewis, 7th grade. Ava Lund, 8th grade. Ariana McMahon, 8th grade. Annalise Montgomery, 7th grade. Mackenzie Nicaboyne, 8th grade. Alexandra Alman, 8th grade. Grace Shakurit, 7th grade. Ellen Regstad, 5th grade. Alex Ryland, 6th grade. Isabel Reyes, 8th grade. Avery Sheeran, 8th grade. Sammy Sherrick, 6th grade. Maya Smith, 8th grade. Bee Tussama, 7th grade. Delaney Thompson, 8th grade. And Marcy Whitman, 7th grade. Congratulations. All right, middle school cheerleaders, please come line up in the front, and we'll have our big photo op. Sure. I'll go down on the other end. I have to say that I have a feeling you've done this before. All right? Okay, look right here, first. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Parents of cheerleaders, please stand and be recognized. Thank you, parents, for your commitment. Our cheerleaders and our coaches really rely on your support, so thank you so much. When the White Bear Lake cheerleaders show up at a competition, the other teams get a little nervous because they have a long tradition of excellence. We're really proud of what they've accomplished in the past. So congratulations tonight to the following athletes who represented White Bear Lake Area High School in the MCCA State Cheer Off. The team was named school song champions in the varsity divisions and received a third place overall. Alicia Barbo. Maggie Bass. Paige Christensen. Abby Franta. Julia Galloway. Kaylee Harris. And MCCA All-State nominee, Morgan Hexum. And another MCCA All-State nominee, Olivia Horva. And yet another MCCA All-State nominee, Cassidy Hughes. Haley Malmstead. And Bree Sherrick. Bree's not here, but Bree was an MCCA All-State nominee as well. Caitlin Stender. And Anisia Warner. She's a, Anisia's a MCCA All-State nominee. And an MCCA All-State cheerleader, Felicity Zhang. And great teams always have great coaches, and this is no exception. Coach Lindsay Lackman. Coach Lacey Morgan. And Coach Kelly Rivers, not with us tonight. She had a baby today, kind of a big day. We'll give her a flyer on this one. And our head coach, Heather Wallström. That ends our ceremony.
7:00 PM iPad time, which is what we're relying on up here, so we'll call to order this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll? Wilson?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Fahy, here. Kimball?
Here.
Newberg?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Mullin. All right, would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have before us an agenda for this evening's meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, which consists of a number of items that are before the board on a routine basis, month after month. Included within this consent agenda, we always have a resolution to accept gifts which have been made to the school board. This month is no exception, except for the fact that we have an extraordinary number and variety of gifts that we are going to be moving to accept this month. We have thousands of dollars donated in support of the high school fall play, and I think we'll hear more about that in a few moments, to support the archery team, to support boys' and girls' varsity basketball, to support our Community Services and Recreation Senior Program. And, my gosh, we have a large donation from the White Bear Lake Lions Club to support our lighting in the community auditorium, and a large donation from Haberman Machine, Inc., for our manufacturing lab at South Campus. So we are just very, very impressed and thankful of the number and diversity of gifts we're receiving. Seeing that, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move we accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. And this calls for a roll call vote. Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. And now is the time for public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the public who wishes to address the board to come forward. We do ask people who want to address the board to fill out a card, which is normally on the table behind our actors over there, and to bring it up to the dais ahead of time. I don't see a card up here. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to our first information item, C1, and that is a super caliphragilistic, expialidocious update. Dr. Lovett.
Madam Chair, my magic, I can't quite understand. We have the director, Wendy Suya, with us this evening, and Connie Hamilton, who you recognize because she was a long-term music teacher. And there's some magic going on this evening, and I understand it, that we may be able to see Mary Poppins, Burt, Jane, and Michael. What is going to happen tonight?
Welcome, Ms. Suya.
Good evening. We opened our musical last weekend on Friday night, and this was the first time in many, many years that we have sold out shows on our pre-sales. So the community supported our shows, really excited about that. We have another show for this weekend as well, and we open on Thursday. And we've brought for you, some of our students, to perform for you. They also performed at a practically perfect morning breakfast that our community was invited to for elementary students. This was the first year that we took advantage of this opportunity, that we have a show that is geared for elementary students, and they came over to North Campus, and our students sang for them and made crafts with them and had a really fun, a practically perfect morning with them last, two Saturdays ago. So these are some of the numbers that those students also heard. We have our Burt character, who is Patrick Timmons, will sing Chim Chim Cherie, which is part of our prologue that opens the show. We have our Mary Poppins, Bree Churchill, our Michael Banks, who is Ryan Kroll, our Jane Banks, who is Cameron Pierce, and they will be singing Practically Perfect for you. And we'll close with an excerpt of Let's Go Fly a Kite by all four of our performers today. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Ms. Suya. Welcome, students.
(singing) We see the mist, there's a mist coming in, like something is brewing and about to begin. Can't put my finger on what lies at stake, but I feel what's to happen's all happened A father, a mother, a daughter, a son. The threads of their lives are all rattling a-torn. Something is making to twist their most tight, as the string you might use when you're flying a kite. Chim chim and eh chim chim, chery chery.
(singing) By the time it's been past, though the weather's been around.
(singing) 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 (applause)
Wow, I had flashbacks of Dick Van Dyke and Julie Andrews there. You guys did fabulous, just fabulous. Any comments for our wonderful actors and musicians?
I'll just share with the board and the audience what I just told Marge. He's got a better voice than Dick.
Anyone else?
They all have just beautiful voices. I could just see the whole play right in front of me.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Can you stay and sing the audit report for us?
Good idea. Sorry.
Mr. Kimball?
Well, I just want to, I talked to all of you, and it just is so great. As Janet mentioned, you know, there's some of us who were around when the, you know, the Dick Van Dyke Julie Andrews play came out, and it was magical then, and you made it even more magical. It was just so outstanding. And, you know, when you talk about supercalifragilisticexpialidocious, you know, you can say it backwards.
In your sen now, don't say the expiastic fragile cali rupus.
But that's going a little bit too far, don't you think?
You guys were just fabulous. We're so happy you came tonight to share your talents not only with us, but the viewing public. Thank you so much, and have a great rest of a run.
Thanks.
Alright, thanks, guys.
(applause)
Okay, while they are taking down their electronic piano, we'll turn to information item C2, the superintendent's report. Dr. Lovett?
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, it will be a dull report indeed, unless I have help from the cast to sing. And we want to save their voices for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So in addition to this remarkable musical, just a couple of things, before our meeting this evening, we recognized our girls' and boys' cross-country teams who participated in the state meet, and our middle school and high school teams that competed at state. That was really fun. You'll see some pictures of both teams. It was a full house. Last week's, on Friday, Veterans Day, it's always a very special time, and for a number of reasons, I think this year it felt more moving than ever. There were activities throughout the school district and our K-12 schools, as well as a conversation at our senior center. Some of the pictures that you see here were central in Vannis Heights. At Vannis Heights was a special time because a number of our Hmong parents and grandparents who participated in what is often called the Secret War in Vietnam, participated and really for the first time came out in large numbers. So we honored all veterans on Veterans Day, and a very, very special community time. Next week, for those of you who have children or grandchildren or other children you're looking after, Monday, November 21st, and Tuesday, November 22nd, are parent conferences. And if you don't have, not sure when to do it, just check with your school principal. At the elementary level, it's signing up, and at the secondary level, it's a more open process. But that's a very important time for our families and our staff to connect. Wanted to acknowledge a group of visitors that we had, international. A group of rotary exchange visitors from Russia visited the district last month. I want to acknowledge Kathleen Daniels, our Director of Special Services, and her team that played a special role in hosting them, as they have an interest in our special ed programs, pre-K through 12. And Kathleen and other members of our team gave them an opportunity to really see what it's like inside of our classrooms. So we thank our principals, and our classroom teachers, and really our students too, who were so responsive. You can read about it in the White Bear Press. We'd like to acknowledge our local reporter who was there with us as well. Something else that's coming up, it's really hard to believe because the weather has been so nice, but I got my first message from the National Weather Service. We're going to go from fall to winter this week, at least. It may happen. And we, back in the old days, when some of you were in school, you remember, may remember listening to WCCO radio to find out, discover whether White Bear Lake was closed, and you had to listen to Aitken, Babbitt, Clarissa, Dover, Yona, all those before you found out whether White Bear Lake was closed. But now, parents, if we do close, parents will get a school messenger phone message and email. The message will be posted on the homepage of our website, and the messages will be posted on our Facebook and Twitter pages. So depending on what age you are, and your familiarity with technology, all those things will happen at the same time. I want to acknowledge that Hakim and Brianna are normally with us. In fact, often for our work-study sessions, they are, both of them are with us. Neither are able to be with us tonight. They send their regrets. But I felt we needed some message from our students. So Ms. Vetti, would it be possible to hear perhaps a minute and 41 seconds from our students about what every student and adult should know about school closings?
We can certainly work on that. We will get the video pulled up here, and then we'll hear from our students what it is that family should be paying attention to when they're wondering whether or not we have school.
And remember, if this doesn't come up, members of cabinet will be coming up and singing the very, the message.
Alright. Oh, wow.
Here are some winter reminders.
Canceling school is a difficult decision for the school district to make, and it's a decision that impacts thousands of families in many different ways. But this decision is always made with the safety of students in mind.
Our district relies on weather forecasts provided by the National Weather Service Twin Cities, which is the official government authority on weather services and weather warnings of the state of Minnesota.
Wow, that sounds like a trusted source to me.
Families should always assume school is open and in session unless they hear or see differently. Websites will only indicate when school is closed, not when it remains open. For school closings, early dismissals, and late starts, call the school closing hotline, or watch and listen for information on these outlets. K-11 TV, KMSP 9 TV, KSTP 5 TV, WCCO 4 TV, WCCO AM 830.
Parents will be alerted in three ways as soon as a decision is made. School messenger phone message and email will be sent to all parents. Message will be posted on the homepage of www.isd624.org. Messages will be posted on the district's Facebook and Twitter pages.
The district knows closing schools can be very disruptive, especially to working families. But our safety is our primary concern.
Thank you for listening to this important message.
And I rest my case.
Alright, well, thank you very much, Dr. Lovett. We'll now turn to our first discussion item, D1, presentation on the 2015-16 Audit Report. Dr. Casmercheck, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I would like to welcome Jim Eikten here from our auditing firm of MMKR. I don't think he rehearsed this in song, so sorry to disappoint, but I'm sure he'll do his best nonetheless. So welcome, Jim. He will be going over the results of our fiscal year 2016 audit.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Eikten.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Jim Eikten. I have been known to strike a tune off every once in a while, but if I'd have known, I would have, I would have sang it, but that's probably not possible, given the nature. But they were exceptional, by the way. They were, they were very, very, very good. Makes me want to go out and buy a ticket, but it may, hopefully, it's not sold out. But I'm here this evening to provide the district with an annual financial update, the audit report for this year. First of all, it's important to understand the role of the auditor. My role in being here is to provide an opinion on the district's financial statements. It is required under state law that the district prepare an annual financial statement, and have that financial statement audited by an independent certified public accountant, which is really the role for me in being here. We're also required as part of that process to provide a set of opinions on the various criteria that is involved in an audit, and that includes providing opinions on your internal controls, your compliance with laws and regulations. We're also required to provide what's called a single audit of federal awards, when the district receives over a certain amount of dollars in federal. You certainly are receiving that revenue, and so we do complete a single audit. And lastly, the State Auditor's Office here in the state of Minnesota provides us with a list of the state laws that they would like us to test. The list changes on an annual basis, and we don't, like I said, test every law, only those laws that the Office of the State Auditor provides us a list of. So in my report, we did issue a number of opinions as part of our audit. We did, first of all, issue an unmodified opinion on your basic financial statements, which is the opinion you were looking for. It is a clean opinion, which has been the case for any number of years. The terminology unmodified is the appropriate opinion in that area. So certainly a positive result in that regard. It is important also to understand that the district does take the preparation of the financial statements quite seriously. In fact, they take it the extra mile when it comes to preparing their report, and actually issue a comprehensive annual financial report called the CAFER, for which they submit for achievement in financial reporting. And I forget the number of years you received their certificate, but it has been quite a number of years that you received that certificate. So certainly you're taking it very seriously here in the district when it comes to your financial report. I did mention the internal control opinions that I provided. We did not have any findings to report in the internal control area. As mentioned, we do audit the single audit. We do provide a single audit of your federal awards. We did have one finding to report in that area. The federal government recently did modify all of the standards for single audits, for their guidance for receiving federal awards. And one of those changes that came about was you're required to have what they call, what I would call, written and documented controls over the federal revenues that you're receiving. These particular standards are required, like I said, to be documented in written form. As part of our audit, we checked to determine if that was the case, and it was not. It is important, then, that the district does take, did take action on this. You'll find that, I believe it was this evening, there's going to be a policy that's coming forth to the board that outlines the procedures that are required in this area. And then that policy also requires, then, that the district follow up that and prepare the actual accounting procedures that correlate back to the policy. It is important, with regard to this finding, to provide some context in terms of the pervasiveness of the finding. Our firm audits roughly 60 entities that we provide single audits on, and I can name only three entities off the top of my head that are not receiving this finding this year. So those entities, let me back up. The reason that is, is most of the direction for preparing these written procedures is coming from the federal government to the local state of Minnesota, and the state of Minnesota is then required to submit the requirements out to the various local entities. And there's a little bit of a delay there that is causing some of the, really the recognition of a finding like this. So your district is not alone in the delay in receiving this finding, but certainly by the time next year rolls around, we'll, they'll have those procedures in place. Lastly, I mentioned the legal compliance audit. We didn't have any findings in that area. All in all, the results when it comes to the compliance side of the audit are exceptional. Like I said, the one finding was not unexpected, and really no other findings to report with regard to the rest of the audit. So really, a very, very good, good result overall. Then I'll move on to the second part of any audit. An audit really has two parts, one of which is how you're doing from a compliance point of view. The second one is how are you doing from a, I'm going to skip that one, how are you going to go, how are you doing financially? We tend to use benchmarks in our audit to determine how the district is doing financially. The first graph that I presented here, all of this data is in the management report. If you received my documents, you'll find these. If you've received my documents, you'll find these, these graphs in the management report that was presented. The first one is reporting on the district's revenue that you're receiving on a per-student basis compared to how you compare to other districts in the state, in the seven-county metro area. You'll note in this presentation that the district, at least in 2015, receives roughly $662 less general education aid than the comparable district in the seven-county metro area. That's, that's significant. There's a lot of factors that roll into that, some of which relate to the state formula, some would relate to referendums, and a variety of other components. But you are receiving less aid than the comparable school district of your size. One of the other items that stand out on that graph is you're also receiving significantly less debt service revenues. Now, in the area of debt service, actually, that correlates back to the debt service costs that you have. You'll note in the next graph that I show that the district is managing their debt service costs to the extent of almost having a very significant decline in the debt service revenues, which again is great for the taxpayers of the district. We also report then on expenditures, and as you would expect, on a per-student basis, the district is spending about $800 less, $898 less on a per-student basis annually than your comparable school district. And the reason for that is, goes right back to revenues. You don't have the revenues available to you, so the district is controlling cost and managing their costs within the realm of the revenues that you're receiving. You'll also note in this graph that that debt service fund also stands out, again, on a, on an annual basis, the debt service cost to the district is roughly $670 per student, and on average, its other metro areas have almost $1,700 of debt service costs. Again, district is managing their costs quite well. You'll note that this particular year, the district did receive additional revenues from, from, from the general education formula. Most of those dollars went into the classroom in the form of salaries towards either regular instruction or special education instruction, but also used to cover some additional transportation costs that the district was incurring. So we also reflect in our presentation on the financial position at the end of the year. You can see under this graph, we typically use fund balance and cash balance as an indicator of the financial well-being, and then the expenditures really showing how the district is doing in terms of growth. You'll see in that particular presentation that fund balance was flat, if you will, as projected in the district's budget. You have a fund balance policy that guides the fund balance at the end of the year. That particular fund balance policy reflects that you aim to have a fund balance between 12.5% of your expenditures and 16.7% of your expenditures, and at the end of the year, you finish at 15.5. So you're right in the middle of that particular policy that is adopted by the board. Overall, you'll find that, here's actually another graph that shows that 15.5%. Amazingly enough, when you look at the financial results for this year, the district finished the year with, within $300,000 of what was projected in the district's budget. You have an operation of almost $102 million running through that you're projecting both your revenues and expenditures, and the actual results came within 300,000, I think that's why I wrote it down, .041%, .014%. We're talking in the thousands of percentiles here, which is very, very close in terms of actual results to projections. And certainly, the district can be commended for that. But most importantly, from the board's perspective, the audit result is something that, how do you want to say it, it's really old information. We're talking June 30, 2016. Most of the information that you're using to make decisions is based on data that's coming to you on a consistent basis, really through the budget process. And one of the results that you kind of take up from an audit is, well, are those projections and those results going to hold true so I can make good decisions? And certainly, this audit is reflecting that. You can be certain that information you're receiving can be used to make informed decisions. That's an important, really probably the most important thing I can say in this audit. So I'm going to reflect on a couple of other things, certainly in the student area. The students served in our report shows that the district's student population is increasing, an important element for the district because it becomes harder to manage when you have an declining enrollment situation. We also reflect in this report on the other governmental funds. You'll note that for both the Food Service Fund and the Community Service Fund, that those particular funds do have an increasing fund balance, but both of those were projected in the budget as well, and certainly showing an appropriate fund balance in terms of the operational size in that area. Lastly, the district does have a number of other funds that it operates, including a Internal Service Fund for its self-insured health benefit plan. You have a severance obligations Internal Service Fund as well as self-insurance dental plan. Probably the most noteworthy one on that particular presentation is the Health Benefits Self-Insurance Fund. The district did go to a self-insured for health a few years back, maybe a year and a half ago. The financial results in that area reflect at the end of this particular audit year, the district does have a positive fund balance of roughly $500,000. That can be, that's important. It is a very immature fund, and to have a positive start to begin with when it comes to financing those health benefit costs, which are increasing, as we all know, and a positive step in the right direction when it comes to that particular fund. I'm going to skip over that. We also want to reflect in our, in our audit that there are future accounting and auditing updates that are forthcoming. We are constantly looking out for important items that are coming forth from the Government Accounting Standards Board, and you'll note that we did reflect on GASB 75, which will change the accounting for your OPEB fund and including your OPEB trust fund that you have. This particular standard will come into play probably two years from now, but it will change your financial report for the funding and how you report some of those OPEB obligations, including the OPEB trust fund that you have. So look for that in the next couple of years. So last, so in summary, I did issue an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements. I mentioned the Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting. I mentioned the one finding, certainly that was a finding that we had seen in a number of our audits. And then we are seeing, again, either improving or stable overall financial position within, within the district in terms of its financial results. And lastly, I just want to reflect on the overall audit process. The audit went very smooth. The district has really been focused on improving, improving and strengthening the business office. They've had improved overall financial results and audit results the last few years as a result of that, and I just want to state that for the record, that things are improving in the finance office greatly over the last few years. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you have.
Well, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Aitken. We are, have this item on for discussion right now. We will be back on an action item a little later tonight to accept the audit. But for now, are there any questions for Mr. Aitken, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir. Mr. Aitken, pretty much on your opening slide, although maybe we could reference it off of this one, but on the state deciding which laws they would like inspected essentially, is it, and I suppose I don't want it to become predictable, but is it based on, in a general sense, that a number of districts have this problem? Would we expect to see this come up next year, for instance? Is it completely random? Is it district-specific when they, you know, ask to inspect those sort of things?
Yeah, the Office of the State Auditor provides us with a list of the laws that we are required to test, and it is a global list. Every auditor in the state uses the same list, so they're not sending a list of things related to the White Bear Lake. It is a list that they provide to every auditor in the state that is used for every district. But it is a list that's changing based on their knowledge. So if they're doing their own investigations or the Office of State Auditor is looking at certain criteria that's coming from things that somebody might have sent to them, like that seems unusual, or if there's a law that they just believe people are interpreting wrong, they add those to the list. So that's how the list changes, mostly related to their own understanding.
Number two, on the finding. Sure. I'm interested in what would constitute acceptable sub-receit monitoring. Could you give me an example of that?
Yeah, so sub-recipient monitoring, you are, there are federal grants that you tend, that you do or you may pass through to other governments, local governments. So you're the main recipient, and then some other district or some other entity receives money that you pass to them through what's called a sub-recipient. And when you're doing that, you have to monitor them. You can't just give the money away and say, oh, do what you want with it. You're required as a district to monitor what they're doing. So you're required to, to have procedures in place to do that. And so how are you going to do it? When are you going to do it? How often are you going to do it? Those need to be written down and how you're going to implement those.
So we can decide.
So you can decide, absolutely. There's some particular requirements that the federal government would say you should have, but you need to decide that in terms of kind of the nature of that. But that's an example.
And my final question is, I saw no mention of a reserve fund. Is that something that you did investigate or not?
Give me an example. What do you mean by reserve?
Well, maybe it's an amalgamation of other funds, but in my experience with other districts, they have, you know, their operating funds and everything, and then they have a reserve for catastrophes, unexpected number of terminations, you know, that sort of thing.
And so the, so the district manages that particular concept in the, in the way you manage your fund balances. So on this particular presentation, you'll see that the district has a total fund balance of $27.5 million. The fund balance policy that's adopted by the board is used to basically set aside dollars for that particular reason. So you set aside a reserve for a number of things, but one of which would be, call it a rainy day, things might go bad, the state might cut your funding, there's all kinds of risks that you're trying to manage. And the fund balance policy is put in place so that, yeah, we have those dollars set aside. Then the district sets aside those dollars by using this fund balance policy, and I believe the range, I haven't wrote it down, but it's 12 to 16%, I think, roughly.
Would it be the 15.5% for 2016?
Right. So the 15.5% is where you're at right now. Generally, your fund balance policy, once you fall outside of the range that is adopted by policy, the policy kind of takes over and tells you what to do. And, and there's actions typically taken by management to correct that.
Now, we're down to nomenclature. What you call unassigned fund balance, I knew is reserve.
It is, exactly. Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Aitken? Mr. Kimball?
I was, it looks like we took care of last year's finding, so that's great news. Those are.
George has been listening to me over the years, I think.
What's that?
You've been listening to me over the years. I always state, and I'm going to reply to that, so findings, an audit is really a learning experience. It's not intended to be punitive. There's no, there's no real kind of, if you have a finding, you have a finding. There's no penalty. But as a board, you really want to have a finding go away. It's a corrective action needs to be taken. And George points out that in my report, we reflect on that. We reflect on, hey, did those findings from last year get corrected? And they did. There were two findings that were reported last year that went away. We tested for them, we were required to test for them to make sure that they did, that they're no longer occurring, and they did go away. So great question.
And then I'm sure Wayne will take care of it, but I just, you know, you, at the end, you talk about, it sounds like a change in accounting reporting for the OPEB, and, you know, a little nervous because we've had a little history in that area, and I'm assuming we're, we're okay. It's just, you know, we're not going to have to necessarily change how we use it. I mean, we'll find out, I assume.
Right. No, the, the accounting standard is set, there aren't going to be any changes on anything financially in how you use it. There's going to be no funding changes, there's going to be no budgeting changes. The changes will be in your financial report. You'll see it change in how we report it. Right now, the reporting is on a funding basis, meaning how well are you funding the obligations? In the future, it's going to be more of, well, how globally are you funding the whole bit? Meaning, the funding basis is an annual look, like how are you doing it each and every year? The future accounting is going to be, well, give us all the liabilities, give us all the assets, and now we're going to report the net difference. It's a different viewpoint, but in terms of budgeting and how you're using the funds, that will not change.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Aitken? All right, thank you. And you'll wait till we back up for our action item, then?
Sure.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Aitken. All right, we'll turn to our next discussion item, D2, and that is first reading of school board policies. Obviously, our school district has a number of policies in existence that govern our operations. From time to time, we review those policies. We may make changes recommended by the legislature, recommended by the Minnesota School Boards Association, or by our own policy committee. We also occasionally adopt new policies. Once policies are either recommended or existing ones are reviewed and have recommended changes, they come to the policy committee for review. Mr. Kimball and I sit on the policy committee. We work through those, and then when we have them in a form where we want to present them to the board, they come to the board for first reading. This is an opportunity for the school board to ask any questions about the proposed policies. Once they go through first reading, they're back before the board for second reading, which is the opportunity the board has to either accept them or reject them. Tonight, we have six policies on for first reading. I'm going to very briefly describe the policies and what the recommended changes are. First of all, we have policy 206, that is, public participation in board meetings. There are very, very few changes to this policy. It is an existing one. There was language adding what Minnesota statute applied to one of our subdivisions. We also added that veteran status is something that is public data about applicants for appointments. And there is certain information added because of a statutory change regarding first and last dates of service on the public body and the existence of a final investigative report. So, and, Mr. Kimball, I remember, made this recommendation, we did change a reference in agenda items to, from the word citizens to community members, because we have children who attend our school district who are not United States citizens, we have parents who are not United States citizens, but they are all community members, and they all have the rights that we set forth in the policy. And then we finally added an addendum to that policy, which actually supports the procedures that we'll use. The next policy, 525, Violence Prevention. There were, once again, few recommended changes to that. Most, as I recall, were grammatical. We did add some new prevention strategies, including that all visitors to our schools now will be required to have a visitor's badge and to indicate that they are authorized to be in our schools. And that is, those are the primary changes to that policy. Policy 701, the establishment adoption of the budget. The purpose of this policy is to establish lines of authority and procedures for the establishment of the school district's revenue and expenditure budgets. As I recall, most of, I think the main recommended change to this was to clarify that any changes in expenditures should result in the maintaining of a fund balance that is in line with our district's stated fund balance guidelines. So we did make that recommended change. The next policy, 701.1, modification of the school district budget. This simply sets forth the procedures that we would go through if we needed to modify our adopted revenue or expenditure budgets. And there was only one minor change in paragraph 2C to add the language, the corresponding funds, so it became clearer what fund we were talking about. Policy 702, accounting. This policy is, indicates that we are to adopt the Uniform Financial Accounting and Reporting Standards, UFRs, and I think the only change to this was that we had not included the word "financial." So it wasn't UFRs, it was URs. So we, we did add the word "financial" to the policy. And then finally, policy 805, Waste Reduction and Recycling. There are a number of changes here. Every single one of them is to make the policy up to date as far as Minnesota statutes and regulations go. And I believe that is the last statute up for first reading. We all have had these policies before us since last Wednesday, I believe. Wednesday, I believe. We've had a lot of time to review them. Does anybody have any questions or discussion regarding any of these policies? All right. Well, we'll expect them before us next month for second reading. Thank you very much. We'll turn to action item E1, and that is action on the fiscal year 2016 audit report. Dr. Kazmarcek.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So, this is a continuation of the previous presentation on the audit. This is where we, where the board is asked to accept the audit results. So, and Mr. Eickton is still here if there are additional questions.
All right. We do have a recommendation that we accept the audit report for fiscal year 2016 as presented by Mr. Jim Eickton from MMKR, our independent auditor. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any additional questions for either Dr. Kazmarcek or Mr. Eickton? All right. This calls for a roll call vote. Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
All right. The audit report is accepted. Thank you very much, Mr. Eickton. We'll turn to our next action item, E2, and that's action on health insurance rates effective January 1, 2017. Dr. Kazmarcek.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. All right. So, this was referenced a little bit earlier, but in the fall of 2014, a decision was made to move to a self-funded in, uh, health insurance model, and that was effective January 1, 2015. At that time, our insurance advisory committee, which did exist previous to that date, became much more involved and much more active. That committee consists of representatives from all of our bargaining units. The committee regularly reviews claims data and provides recommendations as appropriate, including as we consider rate increases from, from one year to the next. At the board's work session, most recent work session, much of the discussion centered on Grand Rounds. Grand Rounds is a service provider that assists employees and dependents navigate the healthcare system with the goal of achieving better results. For the past several months, the insurance advisory committee has considered Grand Rounds and ultimately recommended moving forward with a rate increase that includes, that, that accounts for working with Grand Rounds going forward. So, that, in, the insurance advisory committee recommendation was unanimous. So, the recommended rate increase is an aggregate amount of 9.3 percent. Piri Gilfoyle and Rob Keller from National Insurance Services are here to provide an overview of this recommendation. Additionally, Tyler McIntosh from Grand, Grand Rounds is here to answer any questions specifically related to, related to Grand Rounds. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to Piri and Rob.
Great. Welcome, gentlemen.
Tyler, oh, hey, Rob.
Madam Chair, fellow board members, thanks for having us. We don't have a lot of time. I think we have 10 minutes allotted, so really, I'd like to open it up for questions or discussion items, if need be, on specifically Grand Rounds while we have Tyler here. And then, any rating questions that may come up, if there are any questions?
We did have, I love, substantial discussion about that at our last work-study meeting. I think we were individually, we, many of us took the opportunity to research Grand Rounds through its website. I must admit, I was a little skeptical during the work-study session. But, you know, a part of that is my personal situation. You know, I'm married to a physician. I know where to find good healthcare, if I need good healthcare, but I understand there are a lot of people in our school district, especially if they have a significant healthcare need. They're needing bypass surgery, they're needing knee replacement. They feel lost in the system. They want to have some help. Where, where can I go? Not only to get the best treatment, the best medical care, but the most cost-effective medical care. And I think I understand now much better the services that Grand Rounds offers, and also why the insurance company, insurance committee may have been unanimous in its recommendation that we adopt the pricing module with Grand Rounds. That was not a question. Does anybody have any questions about Grand Rounds? Or, yes, Mr. Wilson?
Not a question, but just maybe to clear the air from our discussion at the work-group meeting last time. When I was questioning you about the algorithm and who developed it, and you said that, you know, Grand Rounds is using their own algorithm that they devised, I wasn't trying to intimate that that was a negative. I hope you didn't receive it that way. Subsequent research, when you're the best, why would you want to use anyone's other techniques? I mean, you know. So, I thought we had a very substantive discussion and conversation about the whole Grand Rounds approach to providing care, and I thought, you know, all the questions were resolved then. So, I don't have anything further than that.
Any other questions? Mr. Kimball?
Yeah. I think we've talked enough about Grand Rounds. I just would like to get Mr. Grand Round a chance to, he came all the way here, so can you just talk for a minute? And, and just whatever you want to say, but I do, I wonder, you know, you're probably not the one to actually answer this, but we, how do we measure, and I think you probably covered this, but I don't remember it well, as a district, we're, we're thinking that your services will, in the overall scheme of things, long-term, keep costs down because they're, we're being more efficient with our choices. Do we actually measure that somehow? And then, if it turns out, oh, my gosh, we're, we'd be better off without Grand Rounds, then we opt out of Grand Rounds, or, I guess that's my question.
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to speak to that. In general, the service is meant to identify and measure the quality of physicians, and then we give clinical guidance and steerage to the employee, the patient population, to the higher-quality physicians. Those higher-quality physicians are shown through big data analytics and measuring across roughly two-thirds of all the claims data in the entire country, that when we send patients to higher-quality physicians, they do achieve better outcomes, lower complication rates, lower readmission rates, lower infection rates, lower mortality rates. And those are all things that contribute to less wasted spend. There are lots of studies that indicate roughly a third of all healthcare dollars spent are wasted. There's a lot of unnecessary prescriptions, a lot of misdiagnoses, a lot of procedures that are medically unnecessary, but in a fee-for-service world, that's how systems and physicians and clinics make their money, and so, they do have some incentives to maybe err on the side of doing a back surgery when maybe it wasn't medically necessary, for example. So, to answer your question, the way we're actually measuring for this, measuring's a big deal for, for Grand Rounds, not just in the quality and in the guidance that we're providing, but then also in the cost savings that are the end result. We do provide a year-end annual report that shows, based on your utilization, based on the types of visits that have taken place, whether they're an expert second opinion where a surgery was canceled, or where a prescription was changed, or simply based on the fact that we helped guide a person from a very low-scoring physician to a much higher-scoring physician for, say, a dermatology or a rheumatology visit. And we have some, what we call, book of business average savings applied to those general office visits for in-person care. Ultimately, what we're doing is calculating the number of visits in these different areas throughout the year, and equating dollars saved based on the change in the path of care, especially on those expert second opinions, where we know 10% of your population is driving 80% of your total cost. That's the population that will really gravitate towards using our service for an expert second opinion, making sure they're on the right path, they have the right diagnosis, and they're not receiving excess or wasted or inappropriate care.
We wouldn't, I mean, thank you. That's, that's a great explanation. I was almost going to argue with myself and say that, you know, the, perhaps the, the criteria that we measure it on isn't solely based on, on, you know, a year's worth of savings, per se, but on, on health itself and better overall care, but, which is maybe a little harder to measure, but seems like you have a way.
Well, I think it's, it factors in. So, we're, we're trying to measure the things that we can truly put a hard-dollar figure on, or, or assign a, a previous course of path of care that a patient was going to take. We document that, and then we document that, oh, based on the expert opinion, they've now chosen to change their course and stay that course. And so, there's some dramatic savings to be had immediately there, based on a back surgery that was going to take place, but it's unnecessary, and there's a lot of more conservative therapies that the patient should consider first, and measuring for that. But I think, you know, with the overall cost of care, what we hope to see is that there's some downward pressure. So, whereas, let's say, trend in Minnesota is 8% in a given year, we hope that this service helps, again, provide less wasted care, less excess spending, less misdiagnoses, and that not just those things that we're calculating ourselves and reporting back at the end of the year, but on the whole, that the patient population has received better care, and that equals better outcomes, which puts that downward pressure on the insurance claims cost, because there's fewer visits, there's fewer unnecessary prescriptions, et cetera.
And I just said one, I lost someone else. I, um, well, this isn't a very good question, but I just, I just wondering why the name is Grand Rounds?
It's a good question. We get it often. For those that are in the medical community, it's relatively familiar. If you ever watch a medical TV show like Grey's Anatomy, or ER, or if you have a spouse that works in a hospital, let's say, Rounds is the idea where the physicians go and visit each of their patients, and Grand Rounds is the idea where the, let's say, chief of cardiothoracic surgery takes his, his residents and those that are under tutelage, and takes them around, and it's a teaching opportunity. So, the term was coined in the 20s at Johns Hopkins, and in that, in that environment, you sometimes see a surgical procedure, and there's a, in the round, an amphitheater environment. And it's also the idea that all the brightest minds of medicine, so the heads of each of the departments, let's say, would focus their attention on a single patient to get the right diagnosis and the right treatment plan in the best interest of that patient, because no single mind can always determine the best course of care, and there's, for complex patients, lots of competing interests, and should we do this procedure first, or radiation, or chemo, et cetera. So, that's the, little bit of the etymology on Grand Rounds, where it came from.
Brilliant.
I was aware of that, being married to a physician and being, having watched every episode of House ever. But I, I did remember that at our work-study meeting, we had, as a group, we had a little trouble getting over the notion that this was ground round instead of Grand Rounds. But Ms. Fahy?
I've been looking for this, and I know it's in here somewhere, but is, is it a one-year or a three-year commitment? What, what's the commitment to, three years, good. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Newmaster?
Sort of a question and a comment. My question was very similar to, to what Mr. Kimball asked, and I will say that I was not at the work-study, but I listened twice to the recording. So, and that was very helpful to have, we've never had that before, so that's a really good way to, to be able to pick it up again. And my only question, and it maybe was clearly in there, but I still had this kind of sneaking wondering. Let's say you have a health condition, you're going to go to a specialist. Is Grand Rounds completely optional?
Yes.
So, your choice is always unfettered?
That's right.
And we can totally ignore Grand Rounds if we want to?
That's right.
Or take a try at it, and then ignore it, or accept it?
You're exactly right.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that, so. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Wilson?
In the interest of circumspection, and this is mostly tongue-in-cheek, we do have two sections of our road grid, one in Brooklyn Center, one in downtown Minneapolis, in the vicinity of Dunwoody Technical Institute, named Grand Rounds. However, I think that has to do with turning stations for either the trolley car lines or the rail lines back when they were in operation through the Twin Cities Transportation Grid. Now, you know.
Right.
It's a case.
Any other questions for our presenters? Mr. Kimball?
Yes, sir. So, the, the, just so we understand, and for the millions of people on the viewing cable audience, 9.3% increase effective January 1, 2017.
Correct.
And, you know, we wish it wasn't 9.3, right? But we're, we had higher claims. Maybe you're going to talk, just briefly remind us, and we want to keep, we don't want to sink our holdings down, and, and we hope that, I think our goal would be that it wouldn't be that much each year.
Yes. So, 9.3% increase will be effective January 1, 2017. Of course, our goal is to drive that to zero, if not less. Primarily, that cost is being driven by high claimants this year, which is one of the reasons we wanted to investigate an organization like Grand Rounds. We want to be able to engage some of those people that are driving, say, that 9.3%, and maybe in future years, we can start to lessen it to 7% or 6% or what have you. So, the 9.3% is the increase. You know, in some of the information that we passed out for the work-study session, I think we are still more than $1 million under where we were projected to be last year in a fully insured situation. So, you know, while the 9.3% is, is hard to take, and it was hard to present to the employees, and it was hard for the insurance committee to process, in the context of where expenses would have been, it was, it was better received.
Any other questions? All right. We have a recommendation that we approve the district's health insurance premium rates effective January 1, 2017, as presented in our materials in here tonight. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kimball. Any additional questions from any of our presenters before we vote? All right. This calls for a roll call vote. Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
All right. The motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll turn to action item E3, and that's action on secondary, secondary course proposals for next school year. Dr. Lovett, I see Ms. Paul, Ms. Pearson are presenting on this?
That is correct. I'd ask both Ms. Paul and Ms. Pearson to come up. We had a very thorough discussion on proposed secondary course proposals at our work-study session, and I'll ask, I think Ms. Pearson is going to be beginning.
Welcome, Ms. Pearson.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. As you will see in the board packet, this is a compilation of what we reviewed at the work-study meeting, and if there are any further questions, we are available at this time.
All right. And we do have before us, I think, exactly what was presented at our work-study meeting a few weeks ago. So, let's get a motion on the table first. We have a recommendation that we approve the course proposals, modifications, and deletions as presented in our materials. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Fahy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Any questions for either Ms. Paul or Ms. Pearson regarding these course proposals?
I'll just...
Ms. Fahy?
I just had a quick one. Just remind me, the Grade VI Avid, is that a full-year course?
We are looking to have it full-year, but not necessarily every day. The model would be an every-other-day, so students wouldn't have to miss out on as many electives as they would give up being an everyday course.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Kimball?
I don't have a question. I was just, was going to comment that we appreciate the presentation at the work-study, and I think we really got, really discussed it thoroughly. So, I don't have further questions tonight, and it looks like a number of us do not either.
And I think the point of Mr. Kimball's making those comments, we don't make these decisions quickly and without any background information. We discuss these in-depth at the work-study meeting. We've again had these materials before us since last Wednesday. So, any other questions for our presenters? All right. All those in favor of the course proposals, modifications, and deletions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. The motion carries. Thank you, ladies. We'll turn to our next action item, E4, and that's action on accepting the Ryan Grants. Dr. Lovett?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this evening, we're recommending acceptance of the Ryan Grants, which are funded through the, the school foundation. Remember, in September, we had Connie Many, the president of the foundation, come and talk about the various foundation grants that we have. The Ryan family, family, Ryan family grants really focus on arts. And so, you see seven elementary teachers, one speech, pathologist. All the grants are described there. The total for the eight teachers would be about $4,000. We recommend acceptance.
And I should note that Dudley Ryan, who is one of the Ryans in the Ryan family... And I should note that Dudley Ryan, who is one of the Ryans in the Ryan family, was a classmate of both mine and Mr. Kimball's.
Mostly Mr. Kimball's.
Mostly Mr. Kimball's. Yeah, he went to that evil Mariner High School and didn't stay at the great White Bear High School, but wonderful family, and as I recall, Dudley's mother was an art teacher, and that's why they have such a significant interest in the arts. All right. We have a recommendation that we accept, the Ryan Art Grants totaling $3,898 from the White Bear Lake Education Foundation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. This calls for a roll call vote. Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Right. The motion carries. We'll turn to our last operational item, and that is E5. This is the second reading of six policies that were before us last month for first reading. I'm not going to reiterate what the changes are in any of these, and I will entertain a motion en masse to accept all six policies. Policy 101, Legal Status of the School District. Policy 406, Public and Private Personnel Data. Policy 508, Extended School Year for Certain Students with Individualized Education Programs. Policy 522, Student Sex Nondiscrimination. Policy 721, Uniform Grant Guidance Policy Regarding Federal Revenue Sources. And Policy 807, Health and Safety. Is there a motion to approve all six policies?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Any further discussion or questions regarding these policies? All right. Some of them are financial policies, so let's have a roll call vote. Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
All right. The motion carries. And finally, we've reached the portion of the agenda, which is Board Forum. That's an opportunity for board members to share any news, events of interest, both to fellow board members and to the public. Does anybody have anything this evening for Board Forum? Ms. Newmaster, and then Ms. Fahy?
I would just like to announce that we have an international performance group with us again this week. Kwanghito and Hanyuri musical group is back from South Korea with a government grant to help us celebrate National Adoption Day, and the big celebration will be at Central Theater. We'll have some adoptee groups, there's a variety of them, and these two professional Korean touring groups have joined together to put on a really great show. It is a donation-only, so anybody who wants is welcome to come, and there will be just a mix of activities and things to see. It's central, 3:00 in the afternoon on Saturday, so you could go to the traditional Korean show, and then you can go to the play. Totally arts.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Newmaster. And some of these performers, you are hosting at your own home, isn't that correct?
I'm hosting all of them.
All right. Good for you.
I need to go home and grill.
All right. Ms. Fahy?
I'm just Willow Elementary as their liaison. They have, they are fundraising for a new playground equipment, and they have a GoFundMe site, which you can locate on the PTO. So, if you go to the district website and go to the Willow Lane Elementary PTO page on that, you can locate the GoFundMe site, and they're in the process of applying for grants. And one more thing about Willow, their community garden that they're going to get up and going, and it'll be planted in the spring. They are partnering with the Jeffers Foundation on environmental education, where it has lessons that are aligned to the standards. Each of the students gets a little pack with a magnifying glass and a thermometer and some other things. There's professional development, and it is all free, thanks to Bob Jeffers and the selling of his property in Prior Lake.
Ms. Fahy, does anybody else have anything for Board Forum? Mr. Kimball?
I just, the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation, of which Mr. Wilson is, is very involved, and I'm, I'm kind of involved, and recently had its annual gala, and it was just a great success, with the community overwhelmingly supporting our great foundation. And then I also want to just mention that we have two retirements noted in our board packet, and I don't say names because I've not asked these people if it's a name, but just want to acknowledge them. One, a great language arts teacher who's at Sunrise, been with us since 1998. And the other wonderful fifth-grade teacher at Otterlake Elementary, with us since 1985. And we just are so thankful for your, their work, your work, and, and best wishes in retirement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing nothing, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
And I second that we are adjourned.